Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. This is the Board of Selectmen meeting of 26 April. As well, we'll have, in part, a joint session with the Finance Committee. Mr. Moriarty will be joining us later. He's currently participating with the Teachers Contract Negotiation Team. Tonight, along with the Finance Committee, we'll be talking about the fiscal year '17 budget going to town meeting, as well as articles for town meeting. We'll also be adopting an updated Hazard Mitigation Plan. There's a few issues with that. We'll talk about that when we come to it. But, in any event, we don't want to lose out on potential grants opportunities. We'll be acting on a water sewer abatement, discussing the water sewer rate study. Also acting on a homeowner's request to remove a street sign. Town Administrator has several items to cover tonight. One, along with the Treasurer Collector, will be appointing an Assistant Treasurer Collector. And let me clarify one thing. There seems to be some confusion that Treasurer Collector is hiring yet another person in their staff. They're not simply replacing this, the backfill for Ms. Edwina Pomoceno. And she will retire soon, May. Clearly, a terrific lady who's done a great job for the town and will miss her dearly. And there'll be big shoes to fill with her backfill. We'll also discuss joining the Governor's Compact Community Initiative and some of the topics that we might potentially sign up for. This is a way that we can get some dollars to address some best practices, either working with other communities or on our own. Get some technical assistance in helping us move toward those. Also, get an update on the expedited permitting process. We have now a document that streamlines the process for expedited permitting and looking for some help from the Redevelopment Authority over time here to designate, work with us in designating some priority development sites. And we'll also be acting on a Colonial Power proposal for energy aggregation. Anyone here for public forum this evening? Okay, we'll move right into our business. Is there a motion to approve the Board of Selectmen minutes of 2 March 2016?
So moved.
Any changes requested?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve Board of Selectmen minutes of 15 March?
So moved.
Second, any changes?
No.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve Board of Selectmen minutes of 24 March?
So moved.
Second, any changes?
None.
All in favor? First, real order of business is working through with the Finance Committee our budget that's going to be presented at the town meeting. Do you want to say a few words first, or?
Well, I guess, how do you want to do this? You want to go line by line, go through the budget so people have an idea? Do you want to take it in sections? We can go down and we can highlight where we get changes.
Significant changes from prior years.
I think it's probably important to let townspeople know that, you know, it hasn't been the easiest budget cycle that we've gone through. The town is still working through some of the financial issues that we've had in the last year or so. But I think, you know, with this budget and what we've got in it looking forward, I think we've got a way ahead to correct some, you know, to, I mean, to continue to address some of those so we don't run into some of the same issues financially that we went in before. I think it's fair to say that state aid is level funded, level funded at best, probably, which is pretty good considering the state of the, you know, of the state budget, that there's not a lot of new growth. I can't remember what our new growth numbers were.
Seventy-five thousand.
But it's not very high. So, given that, I think we were able to put together a pretty reasonable budget. And I guess the only other concern that we'll have to continue to work on, and that's Water and Sewer Enterprise. It continues to be an issue that we'll need to address down the, I mean, we've got it balanced and going forward, but there's a lot of expenses on the town side that, you know, could be part of the enterprise fund that hopefully we'll be able to address in years down the road. I don't know, Sean or Paul, do you want to have anything to add to that?
Just one comment. My own total budget this year is $11,514,038. That's down 3% from last year's overall budget. Darryl mentioned brought up new growth is limited to $75,000 this year. The budget we're proposing comes in a little over $17,000 under the levy limit.
Right.
Fortunate to be there at this point. Want to walk through the?
I'd just like to make known to those watching on TV and townspeople that aren't here, copies are available here at the Town Hall and the financial summary, which is a part of tonight's presentation on the part of the Board and the Finance Committee is available there. So if you are so inclined, please do access that. And that would be great.
So you want to walk through this now?
Sure.
And I guess the operating budget. We'll just highlight where, so line three would be the Town Administrator, Administrative Staff. That would be the first line where there are some changes. There's, we have a moderate increase in hours to the Second Secretary in the office. That's to help cover Board of Health, planning board, meetings that she's already doing now, and to cover some additional time that's needed in the office itself.
In addition, we're picking up there some time and effort that the administrative person in the Assessor's Office was doing in terms of assisting the account with accounts payable. So that's, that work is being transferred, and those costs are being transferred from that activity.
Right.
That accounts for part of that.
Right. And so, I guess the change from '16 to '17 is about, right around $8,000. And then, as we go down, the accounting staff, line 11, we're up $7,800 in there. And that was for more, more help.
Outside resources.
Outside resources to help the accountant moving forward, all of which we thought were necessary. I think Derek's done a great job. We finally got a full-time accountant, and we probably needed one five years ago. So it's nice we have one now.
You know, it's probably important to recognize that in a town like that field, where, you know, comparable towns may or may not have a full-time accountant. We're also running our own school district, which comparable-sized towns are not doing. So that adds quite a bit of work to what a town accountant has to do in terms of posting, keeping track of the accounts going on and stuff, which really, I mean, budgetarily, it doubles the size of the town area.
Moving down, let's see, the next line of increase, probably into the Treasurer position. And that's, Jeff kind of already addressed that. That's about a $17,000 increase. Edwina, as Jeff mentioned, has been here for years. And she could only work a limited number of hours per her retirement and was actually working more than that, which we probably shouldn't say.
Just not getting paid.
Just not getting paid. So, as we go forward, the Treasurer, you know, that's an important position in the Treasurer's office. And so, we see the need to make sure that those hours are increased. So, Edwina does things, and Laura Lee can kick in on this. She does the payroll. She's, that's one of the biggest, most important things that she does. And some weeks, she, you know, puts in a lot of hours to get that done, so. I don't know, do you want to add anything to that?
She's also both the Assistant Treasurer and the Assistant Collector.
Right.
I think overall, I mean, these are some sort of major pieces to any of the increases at this point. And I think, you know, it points out that we're trying to go in the direction of making sure that we understand financially what's going on in town, making sure that we have accurate numbers when we make decisions about what to do. And that that hasn't always happened in the last several years, where there were accurate numbers to use to make decisions. And, you know, I think in fairness, this ties to every other thing that the town does. If we can't do this part right, we can't do anything else. We can't, we don't have the budget numbers that we need. If we don't have the financials aren't accurate, we can't run any other aspect of the town correctly. So, you know, it really has to be the priority.
Yeah, agree. Moving down.
Town Council.
Line 20, Town Council, is that an inquiry? $10,000, yes. And that's simply based off last year's, you know, what we think we're going to pay this year. Is that correct?
Right, looking at what we were paying quarterly.
The initial number we looked at was a number that I had seen probably five or six years ago. So, it's hard to believe it would still be that. So, we needed to push that up a little bit. Some moderate, you know, small increases for the Town Clerk. Probably a lot of that has to do with elections. Presidential elections coming up. Those are...
Line 30's basically been sort of eliminated.
Yes, line 30, it's Public Building Maintenance, has been taken out. And not, we haven't lost that money, but that money's been moved to the DPW, into.
Facilities.
Facilities Management.
Facilities Management. We saw that both lines is really kind of addressing similar things. And we wondered why we need, you know, let's centralize it and put it in one line. So that's page one, unless somebody has a question that I missed or a point. So, next line would be 36, the Police Department. There is an increase there. We, for the first time in several years, we tried to address some salary increases for some of our staff, some of the staff in town that work very hard and are very committed to the town. One of it, in the Police Department, there's an increase for the Lieutenant and the Sergeant. Fire Department, we have, there's a moderate increase. We found that, I believe in the training budget, the guys were only getting paid like eight bucks an hour. So we leased.
We budgeted below their minimum wage.
Yeah, so. We at least boosted it up to $10 an hour. We got them to minimum wage, and that's way below, they work very hard for the town.
Does this also include the payout for?
The payout for the previous fire team.
After this year. Right. To Chief Beldon. Right.
Payment to Chief Beldon for accrued time that we owed him.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Retired last year, getting paid out now.
We thought it was better to address it that way than try to come up with an article or anything like that. And then going through, so that's Fire Police. Ambulance, I know I met with the chief and, or, last week. And he and Derek have been working really hard to get a handle on ambulance revenue. And I, for one, am pretty glad we kind of found that and have a plan going forward. Because the ambulance really is self-supporting. It's not, doesn't cost the town anything, so. Okay, moderate, there's a little increase in inspection services. And I think that was some cell phone and some meetings, not, nothing very, very big. The school budget, the school, I can't say enough about the school. The school came in with a budget that was a little higher than what's in the paper in front of you.
Came in a 3% higher.
3% higher. They came in, they came, we, in the course of all our budget meetings, we discovered we needed to find some money, and the school found some money for us. And so, I can't say enough good things about the school and their ability. It's pretty amazing, the moderate increase they get for what they do. Thank goodness for school choice and all they do there, so. You know, anybody else want to address?
I do, one thing, to tag on to your comment. I mean, we do have a positive working relationship with the School Superintendent and the School Committee, and it's working well for the town. They're using 4.5 of our $11 million budget for the year. But as Sean points out, the town, on its part, is also providing a variety of services. We don't do strict cost accounting. I mean, DPW's mowing the lawns and plowing the roads. Treasurer Collector, accountant, doing, from payroll to benefits to accounting for the school. So, there's a lot on the town side, services being provided in turn. So it's a good handshake on both sides.
It's a good relationship. The VOGAD, and I guess this is a question from Marlene and Brian. I know I saw an email regarding.
Thank you.
That there could be an increase.
Right.
In VOGAD.
Right, and it worked out. Actually, the original number that the school, that was submitted, is enough, is a good number.
Yeah, so VOGAD actually shows as a decrease from last year.
Yeah.
So. Okay, so that was the school.
So you have the 80.
Yeah, the.
Line 49.
On line 49, it shows an increase of $87,000. But that's really, that's the move from the Public Buildings Maintenance on the prior page over to this line. So there's really no increase, no increase there.
Originally, when we assigned facility responsibilities to DPW, we gave them no staff to do the job. But we gave them a roughly $40,000 a year for consulting and contract effort to provide that in lieu of a body. And we're, over the years, two have melded essentially, and it made sense to combine into one account.
There, you know, it shows some increase on line 50, but that's, if I get that right, probably.
Oh, that's, that's, I believe that's from, we took some of the enterprise costing.
Oh, right.
Cost from. Oh, that's right. We took.
The DPW Director's salary.
Right. Goes back to our issue with.
Right, right.
With our enterprise.
Enterprise versus taxation.
Pulled expenses out of the enterprise funds.
Right.
Put it into DPW.
Taxation.
Taxation and the levy limit, because the enterprise funds don't produce enough money to support them.
That's the basis for that change.
Yeah.
Overall, and, you know, so, overall, that does impact the town's ability to do things.
Yes, it does.
The levy limit, clearly, because we're moving money out of things that are included in the 2.5% levy limit, under the 2.5% levy limits. And that means.
Tightens it up.
Every dollar you move in there, you have to somehow make a place for it.
I know the whole enterprise fund is a struggle that most every town is going through right now to try and, let's see, careful in it. Yes, Board of Health was, yeah, Council of Aging, there is, there is an increase, same thing. The Director, we've got an increase in her salary, trying to bring her up closer to the level that some are getting paid in surrounding towns. And we certainly appreciate all that Jane and her staff are doing for the folks in town. And I know that personally, how well it works, and what they did for my parents, so. And they continue, transportation continues to be, they do more and more trips, so. Veterans benefits, it shows an increase, that number.
Just a function of workload.
It's a function.
Case load.
We get that money back, it just takes time to get it back.
We get 75% back.
Right, right, so. Okay, the next, line 64 is the library. There's an increase there. Some of their increasing their hours a bit down there, and they're adding children's.
Children's reading.
Children's reading.
And there was also a couple of thousand dollars for gutters.
Right, right. They're trying to do some work. And the library, as a function, that budget can never go backwards because they do get a grant from the state, and the state requires there to be a little bit of a bump up in order to get that money, so.
It's something just for the future to think about. The town's going to have to consider what to do with the library building itself.
Yes.
If we're not going to replace the library, we haven't done much with it in the last 20 years or more, you know, and eventually it's going to need maintenance of some kind.
It needs maintenance now, there's no question.
Right. Okay, so that's.
Oh, we should address the 65.
65 is the recreation budget, and it's going to show a deficit, or not a deficit, a reduction.
Reduction in expenses.
And that's essentially, they have, Recreation has a revolving fund that's got quite a bit of money in it, and they're working to use that money for their regular operating budget. They actually haven't used the $5,000 or so that has been in their operating budget the last several years. So, we elected to take that out until they, you know, that revolving fund gets down to where it's supposed to be. It's actually, there's limits to where it's supposed to be. And I know Derek and the Selectmen are working with the Recreation Committee on that.
Yeah, the purpose of the revolving fund in Recreation is to collect the fees and then spend those fees to operate the programs that are operated by the Recreation Department. And it's just amassed an amount of money that's more than what it can really have.
Right. Right. They're doing a great job, so. But, anyway.
Obviously, it's popular.
Yes, that's right, they're collecting. And part of it is there, you know, people on that committee change year to year. And, you know, having someone that understands how that budget works, you know, that it's always, if the personnel is changing, it's hard to keep up with all the other stuff, so. Okay, that's the operating budget. Next, we go into debt and principal. I guess the good news is we pay off the elementary school this year, right?
Yes.
Which is, which is really good. Of course, it's a debt exclusion, so probably comes off at a timely, timely point as we're, we'll be considering the Town Hall renovation, so. But besides that.
Retirement.
Oh, retirement, we really have no choice in that. It goes up. It went up this year, and I think this is the first time in several years that it's actually gone up. Health insurance is up.
Same thing, same time in a few years.
Yeah, not, not, not just a function of where costs are going.
Yeah, I mean, that's not, not even that significant of an increase. I'm sure if you probably take the health insurance, group health insurance costs over the last three years and averaged out the increase, it's probably.
I believe they held it, I believe they held it level.
Yeah, it's been held level.
Yeah.
This is our first increase.
Some years.
Yeah.
It's really pretty remarkable that we've been able to kind of maintain that. And the retirement increase, just to, you know, just to speak for a second, only because I have some experience with it, is a function of a couple of different things. And one of those things is projected future liability. So every three or so years, I think, there's an actuarial study done of the retirement system that determines how much it's going to cost to pay it off on a certain schedule. And that determines how much the town has to pay in based on the number of employees that we have. So, you know, so some of that has to do with things that we have no control over. And they have nothing to do with our retirees, actually. It's things like, how well does the stock market perform? How well do our investments in bonds and such perform? And then that determines how much money we need to make up over a period of, I don't know what the schedule, does anyone know what the date is that it's supposed to be fully funded?
I don't.
It's decades away, but, you know, there's a schedule by which it has to be fully funded. And that essentially sets the tone for what's going to happen with the costs, so.
So if we go over to the next page, well, before we do that, I suppose, and Jeff already said, so we have an operating total recommended budget of, is that right, 80?
No, that's just taxation.
That's just taxation. That doesn't include.
You have to know the summary.
$11.5 million.
Yeah.
Right. So the next page is Water and Sewer, the two enterprise funds. And they show, there's some negatives there where we, and that's, that's because some of the, like, rotating biological contactors, instead of being paid by Sewer Enterprise, will now get paid by taxation. Same thing with wastewater pump upgrades. And that's simply a function of, we don't have enough money in the enterprise to pay those things. If it were a true enterprise fund, we would cost out all those things. And supposedly a true enterprise fund, but we just can't generate enough money in order to pay all those things. And our plant has been in need of being rebuilt. And it's really has been rebuilt over, being rebuilt in the last five or six years.
As we speak.
As we speak, so, which is a good thing. So, it's nice to, you know, instead of letting it fall down, so to speak, so. Water is the same thing. There's a couple of negatives on water, and that's a function of not being able to take it in the enterprise fund, so we're paying for it in taxation. Water's a little bit easier to move over, at least from my perspective, because 95% of the town is on water, whereas a lower percent is on sewer.
About half.
Yeah, so, but I know the Selectmen are working hard on this. And, you know, throughout the course of next year, hopefully, we'll come up with some more, more ideas on what to do. I know, I know there's a, the Selectmen have a. I know, I know there's a, uh, the selectmen have a, there's an article. To do, um. Huh? Master plan for sewer, which.
Maintenance and modernization.
Which will, could, hopefully will help us in all this, and it has a cost function in it, so. So, that's the budget. Somebody's got questions. We're happy to answer them. Or direct you to the people that really can answer that.
Again, uh, seven point five million dollar total budget, uh, four point five of that is the school. Seventeen thousand dollars under the levy limit, the overall budget's about three percent less than the prior year.
Yeah, and we're kinda glad to have the levy limit at seventeen thousand, it does give us a little flexibility. Come next fall when you actually put the, um. Um, submit stuff to the state, cause things always naturally change.
Walked through the, uh, articles?
Sure.
Yeah.
I'll take, take a few and you can jump in anytime.
Okay.
Again, uh. Some of the boilerplate items, uh, we do have. Town meeting. Scheduled for the tenth of May, seven o'clock at, uh, Smith Academy Gym, followed by a week later. Elections seventeenth of May here at Town Hall. First article, uh, lists the officers, uh, officers, officers, uh, up for election. One selectman, one assessor, two school committee men. Uh, one library trustee, one electorate on the, uh, will of Oliver Smith, one cemetery commissioner, one member of the Board of Health. One member of the planning board, one member of the housing authority. And one Hampshire Council of Govern, Governments counselor from Hatfield. And then there'll be a question and we'll come back to this again as we go through the articles. Shall the town of Hatfield be allowed to be exempt from the provision of prop two and a half? So-called the amounts required to pay for the bond issued in order to fund the Town Hall renovation phase two. Co-compliant, com- composed of code, code compliant ramps, elevator and fire suppression. And, uh, this action will complete our work as mandated by the Architectural Access Board of the State. And we have until one September twenty eighteen to have all work completed, inspected, installed and operational. And this finishes, uh, finishes off that work. Uh, Article Two, sum of money to cover a deficit in the. Fiscal year sixteen water and sewer enterprise fund, and Daryl was just talking about that. We had difficulties particularly on the sewer side, not the water side, but, uh, we'll be addressing those and. It's no easy task, as you see, Northampton has labored through how best to apportion the cost. And then the next one is third.
And how, what was the dol, the dollar amount on that was lower, we originally thought it was gonna be sixty, it's forty-three thousand. And a lot of, a lot of it is largely because of the water main break on Route Five that happened last month.
Which was a six, sixty thousand? Sixty thousand dollar expense.
Yeah.
Uh, Article Three, Boilerplate, authorizing Board of Selectmen to apply for and accept and expend without appropriation. Grants, gifts and awards. Uh, Article Four is simply to allow the treasurer to, uh, be the banker for the town of Hatfield. Article Five, uh, this appropriates, uh, what we get, the funds we get for, from the state. For chapter ninety, for our roads and bridges, uh, two hundred forty-three thousand eight hundred eight dollars. Uh, Article Six, submitted by the town clerk. Uh, authorizes the town moderator at a meeting to declare a two-thirds vote. Uh, without a count, uh, should it be clearly indicated by, to, in his judgment. However, it can be challenged by seven members, uh, sitting, uh, attending the meeting and to force a, uh. An individual vote. Uh, another one for the town clerk, uh, to remain on, office may remain closed on all Saturdays. To the same extent as if the Saturday were a legal holiday, and I believe this is. So you don't necessarily have to stay open on the Saturday before an election, is that?
Right, the, the law requires you to be open on a certain day to take registrations for voters. And a lot of times, especially with special town meeting, that falls on a Saturday, which means I have to staff my office from. Nine in the morning till eight at night, which is quite an, you know, an expense and.
And meanwhile, people have, could have come in.
And no one comes in, so, it's like, it's, you know, so, but I cannot legally.
Understand.
Do it the next day or the Monday without this.
The, uh, next article establishes another enterprise fund, and this is for the cable television, uh, operation, the PEG access operation. Uh, next article authorizes Board of Selectmen to conclude a payment in lieu of taxes agreement. With Hatfield Renewables LLC, recall at the special town meeting, we asked permission, which we're required to under law. To enter into negotiations, completed negotiations, and now we'll be presenting the results of that and, uh, ask the town to approve. Uh, us executing that actual agreement. And we actually negotiated a price better than other communities with the same outfits that's doing business in, in Hadley. And elsewhere around here.
I, I should say that the Finance Committee supported, supports that article.
Yeah, it'll be a twenty-year level stream of income and something we can plan on. Uh, the next article touches back on what I talked about earlier. You know, recall that we had from the Architectural Access Board, not a waiver from essentially. Disability Act requirements, uh, or Architectural Access Board requirements. But rather a time delay in complying with the law. Uh, we were given five years, we testified, uh, Mr. Shea and myself in August of twenty thirteen. And we're granted, as a consequence of our testimony, a five-year delay in, uh, completing some of the work that needed to be done. Once you do renovations to a building and you exceed thirty percent of the assessed value, you need to bring the entire building up to code. This is simply bringing the building up to code, and these are the remaining elements to do that for the Town Hall. Uh, the next item asks the town.
So, excuse me.
Yes, sir.
Uh, with regards to the completion of the renovation project and such, what accommodations are going to be made? For any impact on the, uh, council on aging and such?
They're briefing here tomorrow morning at ten o'clock, uh, Council on Aging's been invited, others have been invited, uh, the architects.
Expand a little bit as to what type of, uh. Situation might, um, exist, how, how, how will they be impacted? I mean, that's back to my original question, and we either encourage them to come now to the meeting. Because it's be there or not speak to the, the issues that they have.
Well, I, I mentioned this at the last meeting, that the presentation will be tomorrow morning here at ten o'clock, the architect will be here. He'll have the, uh, conceptual plans for, uh, this next phase of work. Uh, the detailed construction plans have not been completed, obviously, cause we haven't funded that. And so, uh, folks from COA, folks from, have interest in the museum and the impact there. The, uh, fire chief and the building inspector are having an opportunity to meet with them. For the half hour before the presentation begins to offer up any questions they might like to see addressed. We are talking with the fire chief today, as well as the building inspector, they need to see the construction drawings before they can really do anything. And, of course, they're not prepared yet, this whole project has to be funded first, so.
Also, they're not prepared because the, the information hasn't been prepared to be presented to them.
No.
To deal with.
That's what I said, the construction plans have not been done yet, of course, cause the project's not been funded to do that yet. Once those construction plans are done, that'll be where fire chief and the building inspector, uh, engage.
No, the, I think though, um, to, to both your points, I think it's important for anybody that has a vested interest. Or wants to see what the conceptual plan is to come to that meeting tomorrow morning while the architect is here.
Be right here.
And we encourage members of the older community to participate in that, uh, activity. Tomorrow morning.
Right.
It's an excellent opportunity to get a clear indication as to what the disclosure. Encompasses overall and specifically has impact on the elderly in terms of their availability of. In terms of having, uh, access to space, which is going to be, uh. Considerably impacted potentially, so if the full plan goes through. And it's all right to have the plan, and it's all right to implement it, but there are factors within that plan that need to be addressed. That negatively have the, has the potential to impact the elderly in this town who access Council on Aging.
Come tomorrow, ten o'clock.
Absolutely.
Right here. Uh, the next item has to do with the. Next couple, next three items, actually, uh, three articles have to do with a park right next door here to Town Hall. The site of the former, uh, Smith Academy. In the first article, it asked town to authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept from. The Smith Academy trustees, the property to be used as a park. In the second article, asked the town to approve a community preservation fund. Uh, allocation of a sum of money, uh, for. The renovation of that park. And the third article asked that in addition to that sum, that the town authorize. The Board of Selectmen to borrow fifty thousand dollars, which then would permit the town. To apply for a state grant. And the request for this particular grant has to come from a community, it can't come from an, an activity like, uh. The Smith Academy trustees, it has to come from the community, it's a reimbursable grant as well. So those are, that eleven, twelve and thirteen. Number fourteen. And fifteen are, are both tied together. This, uh, has to do again with center school. And the Redevelopment Authority, uh, has taken the lead here and come in with a proposal and. Um, in working with the Finance Committee and Board of Selectmen, we've made a couple of additions to. Uh, the original Redevelopment Authority proposal. One, uh, as you recall at, as we left the, the story at the last scene. The decision was for the Board of Selectmen to dismantle. Subsequently, uh, the Historical Commission determined it had historical significance and should be preferably preserved. Which started the clock for a one-year hiatus before demolition, uh, could occur. Uh, that expires, I believe, essentially the first of July of this year. So, this is one more opportunity for the town's folks to reconsider that course of action and, uh. What I'm gonna cover here is substantively, uh, what the HRA has been proposing, that is. To take a portion of that property, essentially the front portion and a little sliver just down below the hill. By where the new ball field is. Uh, and allocate that. Uh, to, and offer the, that area up for sale. And. To be sold for the purpose of constructing fifty-five-year-old older housing condominiums. That the remaining fields behind that area, uh, not be part of this sale. That, uh, again, has terms that have been used in previous attempts to sell. Kind of the historical facade on the various sites, uh, be retained, not be sus- substantially altered. That if some, uh, be otherwise appropriated by the town to prepare the, uh, site for sale. Uh, removing asbestos and lead paint and, uh, all the envi, on environmental, take care of the environmental issues. Clean it up. And also leaves aside the sum there also for the, the costs associated with the sale. And that.
Can I, can I just add to the abatement part of that? And that abatement, we have to do whether we sell the building or whether we demo the building. So it's important for townspeople to understand that.
That's correct.
That abatement happens no matter what, so, cause we, we, we're pretty sure there'll be questions from people about why are we abating it? And whether we, whether, if we take the bill, end up taking the building down, we still have to abate it.
Abatement will actually be higher, cause then we have to deal with the roof.
Right, the abatement will be higher, yes, you're right.
Sorry, that's, that's the abatement issue, if the town does the abatement before the sale. The town would have to be, pay prevailing wage.
Yes.
Whereas if the buyer took it, he would not have to pay prevailing wage. If the town had to take down the entire building, we would pay prevailing wage, plus we'd have to re, take off the roof.
Right.
So it would be additional.
Right.
Expense, so there's, there's some trades. Now. Should the property fail to sell, and there's some timelines here, the Board of Selectmen are supposed to get something out on the street. Begin to get something out on the street within ninety days, but then after six months, thereabouts, on the market. Uh, without a buyer. Uh, the article authorizes, reauthorizes essentially the Board of Selectmen to dismantle the, the building. As consistent with the prior vote of, uh, October twenty-first, twenty fourteen. Now, the next article is also tied to this in that. Uh, subsequent to that vote of twenty fourteen, we've been advised that we need to cite a different article. A different section of the law in order to get authorization to spend borrowed money to, uh, to handle this. Uh, dismantlement, and that's all this next article does, it simply amends the original authorization to cite. Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Forty-Four, Section Seven, Subsection Thirty-Four.
So we can actually borrow to demo.
Right.
In the previous article that was done October of.
Fourteen.
Fourteen. By not having that addition, we, we, we could not borrow to, to, uh, demo the building as we thought.
Plus you have to receive prior to, you're getting, um, you know, pre-approval from Bond Counsel and DOR.
Right.
You know, yeah.
Which we didn't do before.
Correct.
No, that's correct.
And this covers us for an abatement as well, borrowing for an abatement.
Right.
Now, should the first article pass, we'll simply table the second article.
No, we can't.
Still need it.
We still need the.
You're right, you're right.
Because if it falls back, right, you don't get.
Because if it falls.
Right.
Right.
Cause if it doesn't sell within a hundred eighty days, good catch.
Right.
You're right, you're right.
So I, I think that's.
Just delete, we'll just leave it there until.
Yeah, I think it's important though to emphasize that, that the purpose of this art, I mean, the way, the purpose of the way this was all put together. With the, with the HRA and everybody else who met and discussed this, was really to try to put, uh, of, some finality. To the thing, uh, that we're gonna try to sell it, uh, we're gonna try to sell it in the best, uh, way possible. That will attract, uh, people and will need the least, uh, amount of land to do it. And to meet the zoning requirements, and, uh, failing that, we, uh, the intention is to, uh, take the building down. And so that will be, uh, either the beginning or the end, uh, of the project one way or another. So I, I think it's important to note that, you know, there, there is an attempt to sell the building again, but there's also a limit on that. To a reasonable amount of time, uh, what we felt was a reasonable amount of time to get that process underway and completed and. Then, then we'll.
Right.
That'll be the end of that.
And, and any money that if, if we do sell it and we abate it before, like, we, we need to. That money will be returned to, uh, the town in terms of taxes, water and sewer, um, um, fees that would be paid. Um, and so, as a Finance Committee, we certainly support it, you know. It would bring some income into the town, which would be nice.
Okay. Yeah, uh, you know, just a, I think the, there's. You know, just if, I think there's sort of a notion generally in the world that, that people living in town cost the town money, that, you know, when you build a house, that it costs the town money in services and so on and so forth. You have to send kids to school and all that stuff. That's probably true in some cases. In the case of that building, it's not actually true at all.
No.
You know, it's over 55, so chances of sending a lot of kids to school are real low and plus that's not really a problem in Hatfield anyway. We have play a school capacity.
We have space in our school.
We would not have to hire additional teachers or anything else. And also the building is on Main Street, which is going to get paved regardless of whether that building is there or not. The fire department is going to fire protect that building whether the people live in it or not. And in fact, it's probably more dangerous sitting there the way that it is right now than it would be if people were living in it. And the police department, you know, same thing. It's going to, it uses all the services, whether anyone lives there or not. And so the cost of having people live there is really marginal compared to the benefit. You know, and it's much more financially beneficial to the town than having people move out way up onto the hill or, you know, in other places of town where it's hard to serve them and more expensive to serve them. This is the cheapest possible place in town to serve people. Everything is going to happen here anyway.
Right.
Article 16 is a planning board to rezone, two parcels, parcels 109 and 110. Some five acres from rural residential to light industrial. They can discuss the merits of that.
Yeah, same parcel that they, that was sought rezoning last year.
Open Space is requesting town to authorize the board of selectmen to put a conservation restriction on the deed for the land behind Center School. We talked about the proposal that HR, the R A came forward with essentially taking the, the building and the little asphalt area behind and a small little parking lot down below, but a good hunk of the remainder of it back to the river conservation, excuse me, Open Space is proposing a conservation age in perpetuity for use as Open Space and public access and for recreation used by the citizens of the town. Capital planning, transfer of some money to develop a master plan for wastewater maintenance and expansion. We have, we talked about some of the issues in wastewater management, but there's also a whole series of DEP requirements that we need to meet. And one of, and we've been received an inspection a few months back. And one of the ways that we can kind of pace our addressing all the various issues they found is to come up with essentially a master plan for maintenance and modernization of our system. And it, and it looks to addressing all the issues associated with stormwater, discharge, elements that are contained, how they're, are they handled, the maintenance of the plant, impact of growth, how, how you're planning for that. It's, it's essentially a 10 to 15-year look, look ahead.
And that's $140,000.
Right. The next one is again another capital planning board of selectmen package on completing the remainder of the sewer project on North Street. Recall, we just completed the section from the intersection with King Street down North Street, right to the bend before it comes out to Main Street. And this would just finish off that, that, the remainder there out to Main Street. And that's, I think, $65,000. Another one for other capital planning, make water service, water service repairs on Valley and South Street. And that's using free cash. And it's, I think, $25,000. And that will permit some long-delayed resurfacing of the road immediately following these service repairs. And then another item, this is something we do every year, protection, replacement fire protection clothing for the fire department. Each year, fire department comes in, tries to turn over their aging clothing, maintaining stock that's current. The next two articles are both from community preservation. Every year, the law requires that they put their funds in certain categories like historic, open space, community housing, and budgeted reserve. So one year, they estimate what they'll need, and then the next year, they come back and clean that up, fix the estimates to reality, and then they estimate for the next year. So it's an ongoing thing, and all they're doing is, this is some bookkeeping, adjusting their accounts. And the next one is, you've seen this year after year, these are revolving accounts, mostly inspection services, building inspector for source of revenue, inspection fees, and the use of the funds is to be paid in salaries. There's a couple others in addition. For example, the fire department has one here for hazardous materials. And then finally, an article on the budget.
Actually, correct me if I'm wrong, the hazardous materials revolving fund really is for...
Insurance.
Is it?
It's 21E. And what it allows to do is if we do, we go to respond to an incident, we're able to build the insurance company, say that Technicolor truck was a case in point. We bill them and then they, they pay us. It goes into that fund and then we replenish, either we can pay back either our manpower or supplies, normally it's supplies, speedy dry, a lot of hats.
It's not for hazardous material.
No.
It's a weird time.
Because we utilize it, we're able to calibrate our gas meters, not from taxation, the operating budget, things like that, so it's a...
Regarding Article 21, is that an either-or type of situation? Are we required to periodically replace existing equipment for the safety and protection of our fire department members? Or is that at the discretion of the town as to when to do it, Steve?
It's NFPA standard. So it's an NFPA standards of 10 years. We're not supposed to have anyone in protective clothing greater than 10 years. So it actually only appears on our capital budget about every eight years with turnover and stuff like that. So it includes everything from helmets to boots, turnout pants, gloves, hat, gear. And, and so everything, anything over 10 years that they can't attend statewide, State Department of Fire Service sponsored training. And in, in reality, anything over 10 years, if someone's injured, we open ourselves to liability. It's, it's industry-wide NFPA standard, it's upheld.
So if I'm reading you correctly, that is a requirement?
Yes, yeah.
Right, so it's not an either-or. So why would we present the article as an either-or type situation?
Because it has to be paid for.
Because it isn't either or.
Has to be paid for, right. But within the context of that article, it has to be paid for in order to be in compliance with existing laws. That doesn't, that, that doesn't say it there.
Well, they're not...
I guess what I'm trying to say, Sean, is do we need to make it a little bit more specific? Because I can guar, almost guarantee that that question's coming up at town floor.
Well, it's not tech, it's not technically a law. I mean, so...
You can choose not to.
It's a, we could choose not to, but we would, we'd be putting ourselves at risk.
Put the town...
I mean, we could choose, I guess we could choose not to buy insurance on the Town Hall too if we didn't want to, but, you know, like, it's not law, it just makes sense. Most people would probably think it's a good idea.
I guess the bottom...
I know the question came up, we talked about it before, and Stephen, the chief set me right. You know, I thought this was something that came up more frequently. So I thought, why not just put it in your operating budget? And Steve said, no, I don't need it in my operating budget because this is about a one, one in every, every eight years.
I mean theoretically, we could choose to put it in the operating budget and do, do two a year or something or whatever, you know.
And it could, but it just ends up being...
But that's just not how we do it.
Right.
Well, in fact, we have nine units in the operating budget.
Yeah.
With what?
We have nine, nine units in your operating budget.
There's always some money in your...
No, no, there's nine, that, that line says 9,000.
And that's how many?
And 9,000 will only, and that's, that, that line encompasses everything. And, and it's, and it, and it makes, that line is obviously, it says protective clothing and uniform in my operating budget. But in reality, it, it's a rough estimate and it doesn't always, some years, like a, my, my communications budget is $4,050. And one radio costs me $4,000. So I buy one radio and I've shot my whole communications budget. My protective clothing line, uniform line in, in the budget is utilized for, might get me two sets of gear if I get a brand-new guy on, two new people, firefighters on a random year, and I have to replace two or three helmets on a random year. Aside from that, there's a specific cycle that runs about eight years.
Yeah. Doesn't cover the major.
Right.
Right.
But to get to your, these, this protective clothing item has been in the budget every year I've been here. And there's, I don't recall ever...
No, it should be on the capital plan every year, but it's not...
I don't, I don't recall ever, ever there's been a pushback. I mean, these are volunteers. We're obviously going to give them the right kind of equipment to go do their job.
I could tell right down, it's going to buy me something like 24 hoods, 35 hoods, seven sets of gear, and, and this many boots and helmets. I got it all figured out from when I was going to come to capital, so.
Right.
As long as we're on, all on the same page.
Oh, we're, we're okay with that. Anything else?
That's the budget, yeah.
Those are the budgets, all the articles, and these are 10 town meeting.
Two weeks.
Have anything else?
Well, no, thank, thank the select board on, you know, we, we worked pretty hard between the two committees getting this budget put together and...
It's a team play.
A good team effort.
It was a good, good team play.
Financial team as well.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Town hall people.
Nice to have, yeah, we, we had the whole Town Hall staff, which we certainly really, we couldn't do any of this without you folks, so.
And I'd special commendation to our town administrator.
It's a team effort.
For her efforts, Saturdays, Sundays, and beyond, helping us get through this and smiling all the way.
No, it's good to see us making a lot of progress on sort of the financials and, you know, having up-to-date numbers that make sense and, you know...
That you can make decisions on.
We had DOR in a couple of weeks ago and they seemed much happier possibly than they have in the past. So, you know, good on that front as well.
We still have work to do there.
Right.
Still have work.
The state is withholding about $100,000.
$109,000.
$109,000 of our free cash that was certified this year. That should be released to us this fall when Derek and the Town Hall staff get our new free cash number. Plus Laura Lee's worked, is working really hard on some tax title stuff that should bring in more free cash. So hopefully next year, hopefully we'll be able to address putting money, one, putting money back into stabilization, which we told town folks that we would do at the special town meeting, and there's simply not enough money in the budget to do that. So hopefully we will be able to address that, plus we'll be able to, with a little bit more free cash, we can address some more of the capital needs that we just simply could not address with, with this budget this year.
So far, what we've anticipated though has been accurate. We anticipated that $110,000 roughly, it's there, we just can't access it at this point. So we just, we're going to have to wait till fall, potentially or possibly next town meeting to be able to deal with that. But the money will be there, it's just waiting for DOR to release it. And that's, you know, that's one of the pitfalls of not having good, accurate information is that our partners at the Department of Revenue lose faith in what we're doing and then, you know, wind up in situations like this, so, which we would like to avoid.
Yes, yeah, yeah. We, we've said it many times, we, we hope next year, there's, we don't have to have any special town meetings to make budget corrections. Can't make any promises, but...
It's, it's one thing to have unforeseen events that, that happens. That's another thing to have, what would be happening after, so.
Yeah, that's right.
You know, and, and there can be unforeseen events, that's...
Oh, yeah.
It's the nature of the world, so.
Yeah, exactly.
Thanks again, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks guys.
Hazard mitigation plan?
We want to take up the capital planning.
Oh, okay.
Take that up, the senior pack. Just actually, we're going to do that under the, the budget warrant.
Yep, got it. Thank you. That was a hand, there it is, there it is.
That may have been with the loose stuff.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
It was my...
Oh, you have it, okay.
Yeah, I have mine, thank you.
I'll, I'll give it to you. We have in our packet, we have a town bylaw that creates a capital improvement planning committee and has representation from the board of selectmen, a couple of folks at large, finance committee, thank you, and the, and the school committee. And it's their responsibility to meet, to meet with various departments and come up with a proposed capital budget for the budget year, upcoming budget year, and a plan for the out years, the, the five years after that. So the capital improvement planning committee closed its works actually in January and then had a regroup when we ran into some significant budget issues, and submitted its final report to the board of selectmen on the 7th of March of this year. In turn, the town bylaw requires that the board of selectmen endorse the plan on to town meeting with what the town, with the board of selectmen approve or recommend approval for, for the fiscal year budget. And this letter is simply reflecting those items. And, and those not involving grants are already reflected in the budget and/or articles. And they include the Smith Academy Park, and then we talked about community preservation, putting up part of the funds and town borrowing the other. A couple of grants that we go through seeking every year. One, the West Street Water and Sewer Improvements, and we've got that first section from the Northampton Line to Church Street, Lindsay Road, and we're trying to get additional sections down West Street. It's about 12 million bucks to get from that to the Waitley Line. The state won't any, won't entertain anything more than $2 million chunks at a time. So we keep framing $2 million chunks of water and sewer improvements along down, down West Street. And again, if we get the grant, great, we'll work it. If we don't, we'll try, try again another time. The other one is water transmission line project. Recall, we've come now down from the reservoir, down the, down the mountain, underneath Route 5, and underneath Route 91. And this spring, anytime now, they'll be coming underneath the railroad. It'll stop right around on Chester Street by the Brockway Smith area. And we are eligible for another grant that has about $600,000, and we're going to apply for it once again. And this would enable us to get the line from the Brockway Smith area over the Mill River and out of that environmentally sensitive area up onto higher ground. Again, if we get the grant, great. If we don't, we'll, we'll work it a different way. We talked about the North Street and the paving there, excuse me, the sewer project. And having done then both sewer projects, the one that was completed already and this section five, other 500 feet, that we come through and pave the, pave the whole thing. The Town Hall renovation project is also recommended, and we talked about that as we went through the articles. Sewer master plan, we, we talked about that. North Street Sewer Project, again, we've already covered that and as we talked through the, the budget and the articles. Water service repairs, same thing, a Valley Street and South Street. And again, once we finish that, that, those repairs, we'll be able to do the paving that's associated. We talked about the turnout gear just now. And the other item here, here is a sewer pump replacement for... replacement to, for, uh, the elementary school that the school had requested. So, uh, I guess there's, there are motion to bless the cover letter to the-
Yeah, motion to approve, the cover letter is submitted regarding the capital planning.
Any other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Next item, uh, hazard mitigation plan? You, you really don't have to, unless you're- A lot of, we've, we've, we have a hazard mitigation plan. We've recently completed an update of that plan. That plan has been reviewed by FEMA, Federal Emergency Management Agency. They've blessed the plan with a couple of minor changes. Those changes have been incorporated here, and now we're being asked, the town is being, the Board of Selectmen are being asked to endorse the plan. There are a couple of things that need to be cleaned up. There's some, some, some editorial and factual things that need to be fixed. However, as Mr. Gahn and I have talked about earlier today, Chief Gahn, uh, what we don't want to do is shut the door on opportunities for grants. And so, in just in our discussion, uh, he proposed, uh, we endorse the plan as submitted, and, uh, the fire department would commit over roughly a 90-day period to come back and, uh, incorporate the editorial and other changes that really need to be made in the document to make it, make it accurate. But meanwhile, we'd get it onto FEMA or wherever else it goes, MEMA, to open the door for, for grants.
It's, it's something, it's just funny, you know, so, we have to have an approved plan in hand to, to qualify for some, for some, uh, grant funding and, and various funding. But every management, every emergency management document we have, whether it be the hazard mitigation, or the SEM plan, or, or some infrastructure plans, we've talked about it, department heads, all those are live documents, like, they all, they all change, you know, quarterly, annually, semi-annually, they all have to be updated. There's no, no plan that we're gonna get and put together and put on the shelf and let it be good for five years, or even one year nowadays. You know, in the past, that, that is, uh, some of the practice that we had, uh, but you know, in the past, that might be practice that worked too. But, but nowadays, it's not the practice, whether it be dam changes and, and, or, or some river stuff, or some highway stuff, or some other stuff. So, so this plan here, uh, we worked with, uh, PVPC on it. This plan has been getting worked on, this update has been getting worked on for a year, um, and it should have been done before it got started. So, so, you know, we are really, we, 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 we passed on it on, on at least one calendar year of, of grant funding. Um, yeah, there's, there's definitely some turnarounds. The problem we, we have is that the PVPC helps us like a consultant, that's part of their role. Um, our emergency manager, she put in countless hours towards this. The LEPC committee, the, the local emergency planning committee put in countless hours on this project, and in the end, what happens is that, you know, they take documents from other places, they mold it, they try to make a good document for Hatfield. There is some, 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 some stuff in there that, that it, it needs to be, be adjusted. But you know what, it had to be adjusted anyway, like, the document needs to be reviewed anyway, so, when I spoke to Mr. Boyle, I said, you know, I think that adopting the plan today is a very, a good move. FEMA, and MEMA and FEMA have both seen this plan and said, in, in, in structure, it's good. So, so our, our, our take is in structure, it is good, um, and maybe in a few little intricacies, you know, it references two dams that affect Hatfield, the, the Francis Ryan Dam, and then against the West Waitley Dam. They affect Hatfield, from the terminal in the report, one of the references, instead of saying affecting Hatfield, says in Hatfield. Well, they're obviously not in Hatfield, but I will tell you, they both greatly affect Hatfield and the water flow. If they were to break, we would have significant, significant flooding. Um, and, and so there's that little stuff like that. But it is our live document, it's nothing that says we can't adjust it every week if we wanted to, but we obviously don't have time for that. But, um, you know, we're gonna adjust it, you know, probably, I think, twice a year we talked about, but obviously, in, in the immediate action, we're gonna take the, the comments, and what we'll do is we'll send an electronic copy back to, we, we'll get it back to Marlene, um, within 60 to 90 days, with some of the, the touch-ups. And then, you know, then we're gonna set a plan, uh, I'm thinking a quarter, you know, twice a year, to take it out, look at it. You know, we put stuff like microbursts go in there, um, some weather, weather events that happen, go with a report, and past weather events, you know, how we do for future weather events, culvert work, stuff goes in, different stuff like that. So it's a, it's a pretty, it's, it's basically more of a natural disaster, but it, it is a plan to, to work from. It's a, it's a guide, you know, it's a goal. It gives us goals, it helps.
Well, it, it appears, Chief, that the, the document itself, the, the submission of the original document is what's key here.
Yes.
Right. You gotta have a plan.
Yes.
And it, it's the bits and pieces that fit in on file.
Yeah.
It's, it's the various pieces that fit into that, that whether, uh, it's something we update because there's a change, you know, a real change, or if it's something we're changing just-
Right.
You know, um, like you said about the dams, those types of things, and, and clarifications. But you have to start with the document, you have to have it on file, you have to make sure the emergency services-
Absolutely.
FEMA, you know, that's what this is all about.
Yeah, so.
And then the tweaks will come-
Yeah.
Through the life of, through the life of the document.
As we, you know, there's goals on there, but we wanna, projects we wanna fund to mitigate future hazards, you know, and funding sources, and who's working on those, and obviously, as we accomplish those, we're just gonna change them from-
Right.
-projected to accomplish, so when we put our next plan in, it'll just consist of taking that plan we have, saying, hey, this is great, looking at it, and sending it along in, in a year or two years.
It's always in motion.
Yeah.
Is there a motion to adopt the certificate of adoption of the Town of Hatfield Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan as submitted?
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Stephen.
Thanks for clarifying.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Run and take the Klipakis.
Uh, sure.
It's a patient.
Yeah. Number nine. Do you have an original we're gonna have to sign?
It's right here, you already signed it.
Oh.
I just noticed this.
Well, we, we, we'll get there in just a second.
Okay.
Uh, there's a, uh, water sewer abatement request here because of a meter, uh, meter issue. Is there a motion to approve the water sewer abatement as submitted for 8 Oak Avenue?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I don't think there's anything more we need to say about the town hall renovation. They'll be here tomorrow, discuss with the interested parties, uh, the proposed, proposed plan for the next phase, the rate study, uh, we're gonna be doing that. We, we talked a little bit about the water and sewer rate study. Uh, the next billing period is 1 November, so we'll be addressing that, uh, with Michael and some other folks, the DPW folks, uh, probably, uh, within the next couple of months, and close on that. Wanna come up forward? Little Napontet Street Sign.
Hi.
Captain.
Are you aware of the situation?
Let me, uh, unless some, something's changed just recently. Here, here's, uh, residents on Elm Street, the Klipakis, uh, their property abuts-
Is part of.
And is part of, uh, what's now indicated on a street sign as Little Napontet Road. We've established that Little Napontet Road is not a town road. I mean, you don't prove a negative, you prove a positive, and there could, there was no finding that the Town of Hatfield has ever accepted the road as a town road, and therefore it is not a town road. We have worked with DOT and notified them about removing it from the Chapter 90 allocation list, uh, because that was erroneously entered on that, on that listing. We've had one, we've, we've had one correction by the building inspector of an address with the assessors to reflect the building in the back there as an Elm Street addressed, not a Little Napontet Road address. And there's no question about your property line and the property you own. The only other piece has been whether there's a real need for the sign to remain there for safety or response, emergency response kinds of issues. Uh, we posed that question direct, I wish we had kept-
He just left, he has no issues.
I, I, yeah, I know, well, he, he just left, I'm sorry, but, uh, I'd, I'd asked specifically Fire Chief, uh, Gahn, uh, whether, in his view, there are any, any issues regarding its designation as Little Napontet or an Elm Street, uh, addressed number in the back. No issues whatsoever. Town Council earlier had come back to say he had no problems with putting a, attaching a private way, or, a private way sign to the Little Napontet. He, his thought was many communities have private ways, they have names, it doesn't give any legal weight to whether it's a town road or, or a private way. But I guess at this point, not a town road, the Fire Chief and Police Chief, neither one feel any real need for maintaining, uh, a Little Napontet Road sign for safety purposes, so, but the question comes down, do we still, I mean, I, I know you were strong about retaining it.
Well, I'm strong, uh, Mike, well, my concern when, when, um, when I was talking with Marlene earlier is, Mike, I'm not, I'm not concerned about the street sign. I'm concerned that every building have a street address-
Yeah.
-for emergency purposes, for enhanced 911. So when somebody, Hank picks up the phone and dials 911, comes into the dispatch center with GPS, and it tells them where that call's coming from. As long as that, all those buildings have that, then we should, as far as I'm concerned-
Yeah.
Personally, uh, and, and on behalf of the Klipakis and the board, it should be whatever the building inspector, the, you know, the Fire Chief and, and others feels is the proper addressing for that, for that area.
And you're in agreement with that? Is that correct?
Everything's been addressed.
It has been addressed, okay.
Everything has been addressed. The proper address has happened, and I should have never, ever, ever had a Little Napontet address.
Mm-hmm.
That should have never happened, as if the land should have never been split either, so, but we won't go there.
Wow.
The lawyers are handling that.
Yeah, okay. So the request is to remove the town sign?
Correct.
Okay.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Uh, any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
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 So, that's-
You're welcome.
Action for DPW? Are you gonna take care of it?
Nope, no.
Tonight?
I don't wanna do it.
No, no, you're right.
Good move. Good move, you're right, Jimmy.
Our lawyer said we could take it down to him, but it's not on our property, it's on town property, we consider. We're not touching it.
Appreciate it.
We need to ask to tell somebody to.
We'll have it taken care of.
Appreciate your patience.
Thank you.
Wait, wait, wait a minute, just a second. Can we make a move here to instruct the, uh, DPW director that-
I'll notify the DPW director tomorrow.
You'll take care of a discussion with him, so that they're assured it's in, not only in process, but it'll be done in a very short period of time.
Thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate you.
Thanks.
Good night, now.
Have a good night.
Take care.
Now, I'll, I'll tell you, Chief, not to re-relate to this, the sign issue, but Chief's worried about access.
We don't, yeah.
Oh, we're-
And-
We have no issue with it.
Yeah.
You know.
I mean, if it's an emergency, you're gonna go right through your lawn, or whatever, you need to.
No, it's not an issue.
Yeah.
Never have been, never will.
It's never been an issue of access, but it's overburdened at this point.
I understand.
That's the issue.
I understand.
From a decent town road to, gosh.
It was an oil and stone, now it's got potholes that are probably around two feet deep.
And well overburdened.
Wow.
It was 50 years old, but nowhere. We've, we've owned it for 25 years, paid tax on it 25 years, never a pop-up.
Should picture flag.
Should see that. Think about it. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Assistant Treasurer appointment?
Marlene, did you- You're having your packet, a memorandum from the, uh, Town Treasurer Collector.
Is there a motion to approve the appointment of Ms. Jennifer Day to the position of Assistant Treasurer Collector, Town of Hatfield?
A little discussion here for a moment.
Sure.
I'm not sure who the person is. I've yet to see a breakout of, uh, you know, her, her application, uh, letters of recommendation or whatever. If we're willing to ignore that or just move by that, then so be it, we'll move forward. But I, I think maybe we ought to look at the possibility of simply, um, having access to, uh, the letters of recommendation, the application in itself. I mean, it says clearly, in what Laura Lee has to say, we are the appointing authority. Is that correct?
Well, she, she has the authority to appoint.
With our approval.
With our approval.
And she's asking for the Selectmen's approval.
She's, she's asking for our approval-
Correct.
-for her action. So we have the final say. Am I correct?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
I mean, where's the candidate? Where's the application? Where's the information?
Well, she, and she interviewed five candidates, um, she called two back for a second interview.
No, they, they've left.
They're talking out as I was coming down.
Well, we can-
Well, I think to, I think to Pat's point, um, for me, it, it would have been nice to have known what the process was, and, and what you're telling us now, there was no indication that any of that took place, so, I, I was actually gonna ask the same question Pat did, which is, what, what are the qualifications? And I understand that Laura, you know, the, Laura Lee's the appointing authority, but if we ultimately are signing off on it with our approval, it would be nice to have a little bit of the background information of the candidate-
Sure.
-or candidates. Or at least know that there was a process followed and, 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 and what, and what came out. I mean, you know, that's all.
The position was posted internally and externally, and there were, actually, I'm not sure how many candidates, how many people applied, but there were five candidates-
Right.
-that, that-
I think there were more, but I think-
Five were interviewed, um, and then she called two back for a second interview. And she just completed the process, I believe, a week and a half ago, maybe.
Yeah, and I think this was the only candidate with municipal experience.
Full experience, correct.
That was gonna be one of my questions, too, so.
Something I heard, but, you know, so I really wasn't involved with it at all, but this was the only candidate that actually had-
That is true.
...the municipal experience with everything that she needs for that position.
The gist of the summary that we had access to in today's packet clearly indicated to me, anyway, and if I'm wrong, I apologize, and we'll just simply move forward. But the approval of the process rested with this board, that's the, the sense that I got from what was, what was stated in that, in that paper. I, I apologize, I, it's here somewhere, but I-
Oh, right, right here. See, she, she, she appoints, she may appoint with the approval of.
With the approval of the candidate. Right, now, we're-
We can invite her to, yeah.
Well, I, what, can, can we table this?
Sure.
And, and actually get some background information?
Sure.
And, because we're meeting next week, and we can, and we can wrap it up then, but just-
I have no problem with that whatsoever.
Yeah. And it's not that I-
Which should have been done in the first place, as far as I'm concerned.
Well, and I have no, I have no doubt that, you know, the, about the process, and, and that this person, that the, that the collector selected is certainly fine, but I, I just think since, as, as Mr. Gahn mentioned, as it ultimately rests with us, it would be nice to have some of the information.
You'd like to see some background information on the individuals.
As we would on every appointment.
On every point.
Yeah. Could we, uh, request as a board that that be the first item on the agenda, so they don't have to spend any time waiting next week, if that's the way we're gonna work-
Sure.
-on next Tuesday.
Absolutely.
We will have the official agenda, and then they'll be taken care of, and-
Well, I'll be honest, I, for me personally, I just assume, see, if Laura Lee wants to be here to speak to it, but I, I would just-
Well, that's what I was going to ask her, if she would come in and speak to it.
Yeah, I don't think the candidate necessarily needs to be here. I just would like some information in case we have questions, so she could answer, that's all.
Excellent.
Great, thanks. Fine. Green Communities Grant Allocation.
We just, the town received its final reimbursement from the state for the grant period ending December 31, 2015, and that was for approximately $43,000. Compact Community Initiative, I'm still drafting the town's response to the topics that we would like to explore. And actually, there's two of them, and it all falls under Financial Management.
The Compact Program is one of the governor's initiative, and it's an opportunity for the town to get assistance and potentially some funding to look at adoption of various best practices. And they've got seven categories: education, energy and environment, financial management, housing and economic development, information technology, regionalization and shared services, transportation and citizen safety. And we can apply for up to, participation in up to three best practice areas. And it's, it's an open process, there's not a deadline, you can-
Right.
-come in at any point in time. And Marlene and I have had some discussion about financial management probably as a, as good a one as any for us to start off with. But again, can we maybe close it? Do you want to talk about some of the areas you want to, you're going to propose?
I'm not prepared, I don't have that information with me.
Okay. So again, we'll take that up on the third, too?
Sure.
Okay.
Expedited permitting process, that guide manual, guidance manual, is pretty well complete. Heard back from all the departments, we just needed to add a list of fees from departments who receive those. The other, the other piece to that is to identify some developable property sites.
Priority development areas.
Right, and that's something that RA is looking at.
We have, we've got it, we've got in place now the guide, the process, integrated process, a couple little tweaks, it's pretty good. Great for putting to sleep, but, and we've, we had once before, before town meeting, which they adopted, the bylaw, excuse me, the Massachusetts General Law for Expedited Permitting. But since we didn't complete this in a timely manner, and we haven't identified priority development areas, or at least one, we're going to have to go back to town meeting again at some point to get approval again, to re-adopt that section of Massachusetts law on expedited permitting. So, but this time, we'll have, we'll have the process all ready to execute, and hopefully we can get some, with some publicity. Yes, sir? It's Mr. Smith.
Since you're looking for HRA to help in this process, could we get copies of that?
I've sent that information, I've sent the information to Larry.
Oh, you did?
I sent that to him a couple of weeks ago.
Is it a PDF or something?
Uh-
I mean, it's on the-
I don't remember, I think it was a PDF.
Okay. If there's any printout copies, you can put them in our box, you know, in there. At our next meeting, we could just start conversation on that.
What you could really help is on the, working with landowners. And there's a, I don't know, I've got one at home, it's a one-sheet little thing about, tells you what the criteria is.
That was sent to Larry as well.
Okay, all right, you have that.
It was forwarded to him.
Would that, would some of those be identified in the original part plan?
Could be.
Okay.
Could be.
So, yeah, we've been trying to find that, too.
So you had it all the time?
No, no. This is part of the RA before us that had done it. And in our, when we finally got the file cabinet open, it wasn't there. The original study that was done under the-
It was a study?
Yeah.
It might be in mine. I've got two drawers of-
Ah, maybe you've got-
Studies and reports and different things I-
I mean, I got to talk to you.
Maybe you got to talk to me.
Well, at least we know where to look.
Certain size-
I'm not saying it's there, I'm just saying it might-
Certain size parcels that need to-
Okay. Well, we'll meld the two.
Right, yeah.
Great. I'm just, I'm just curious, did you cover topic two already? Did I miss that?
No.
No.
Okay.
We tabled that.
Oh, you're tabling? All right, thank you.
Colonial Power?
Again, this is hoping to have a response back from Town Council, so we can move forward with this.
Okay, so that's pending, too.
Yes.
So that's next week?
Right.
Okay.
Yes. Facilities cleaning and maintenance bids, the bids were due this afternoon. We received, was it four or five? Four, two, three, four, five. I'm going to check out the references and report back next week, May 3, on that, on the bid results, okay?
And the bids were within the range-
Yes.
-that were projected for cost, in fact.
Yes, I was pleased with that.
It came out well.
That's all I have.
Any other business?
No, could you, topic 14, did you have a copy of that information, the category in our packet? Any information pertaining to that, facilities cleaning and maintenance?
No, I do not.
So I can get a copy just from you? Is that okay, Marlene?
You're talking about the bid results?
No, no, not the results, what was sent out.
Criteria type, or the specifications.
What was sent out, the specifications? Sure, yes, I-
Thank you. My fault for not checking into it.
We had reviewed those several weeks ago, yes, I have a copy.
Yeah, okay, great.
Actually, we talked about it earlier. Any other thing?
Motion to adjourn.
You got to.
Well, you put your hand over here, you-
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Well, hang on when we don't need to.